I'd like to call the First Liquor Commission meeting to order. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod.
Present.
Commissioner Newell.
Present.
Commissioner Gata.
Present.
Everybody's here. The first petitioner is Hoffman Estates Hotel Group LLC doing business as Marriott Chicago Northwest, 1400 Hoffman Boulevard. Is the petitioner here? Want to come out and identify yourselves for the record?
I'm Alex Petrolini.
Good evening, Joel Lippman on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Is all the paperwork in order, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Are there any questions of petitioner from the Liquor Commission?
No questions.
Okay. Anybody in the public have any questions? There's a motion to release a license to the petitioner.
So moved.
Motion to second. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Commissioner Newell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gata.
Aye.
Motion carried. Chair take a motion to adjourn this particular hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. I'd like to call the second liquor license hearing to order. This is applicant Poplar 2706 Company doing business as Honey Berry Cafe, 2708 North Sutton Road. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod.
Present.
Mr. Newell.
Present.
Commissioner Gata.
Present.
Okay, everybody's here. Is the petitioner here? You did email the applicant this morning, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Well, we can't start our board meeting until seven, so we'll wait till then to adjourn the meeting. The Liquor Commission have a question for the petitioner? I see none. Is everything in order, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody in the public have any questions? Seeing none?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Oh, okay.
The hours of operation.
Hours of operation are, yeah, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and then 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Okay. That's all, sorry.
Thank you, that's all right. Chair accept a motion to release a license to the petitioner?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? See no discussion. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Commissioner Newell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gata.
Aye.
The motion passed. Chair accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. This will be voted on by the village board during the meeting this evening. If you want to hang around, you can hang around. Always pick it up tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. Would like to call the Public Health and Safety Committee here in the Village of Hoffman Estates, July 20, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Gata.
Present.
Vice Chairman Plafis.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. Number two, approval of the minutes of June 22, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Under new business, we have three items. Item number one, request authorization to extend the existing contract for the provision of the village nuisance wildlife control to Animal Tractor Wildlife Company, Hoffman Estates, Illinois, for a period of one year. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Chief?
Chief Boss is on the phone.
I'm here, Trustee Gata. You know, we're requesting the one-year extension to the existing nuisance agreement, and Animal Tractor has done a great job. They haven't raised their rate, and we haven't had any complaints from residents during the entire two years of the past contract.
A good record. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Chief. Number two, discussion regarding entering into the Illinois Ground Emergency Medical Transportation, GEMT Medicaid reimbursement program through an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. Who's going to take that one? Chief? Fortunato?
Nope. Nope, he's not here.
Chief Paul Bilado. I'm going to give you a brief background of the ground emergency transport program, and then our analyst Matthew Galaway will discuss the numbers and the process for the agreement and the program. Ground emergency transport program is a supplemental reimbursement program provided by, it's federally funded for Medicaid transport reimbursement. This covers the difference between what the state provides the village and what our actual ambulance fees are for the Medicaid transports. These funds will be a direct payment to the village, and this requires an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. As a condition of this agreement, the state then takes half of the reimbursement amount that we would receive. Several municipalities are participating in this area. Elk Grove Village, Neighborsville, Roselle, and Downers Grove are all currently participating in this. Matthew, we'll give you the numbers and the process that we would have to go through, and we can entertain a few questions afterwards if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Based on our calls for service for transporting Medicaid patient, or Medicare patients, the fire department transports, on average, 600 patients a year. And based on our current fees for service, we would receive no less than $350,000 in annual reimbursements, and that's our half to keep. The state would receive another $350,000. This funding is straight from the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services, so it is federally funded, unlike the current reimbursements we receive from the state, which are minimal amount, only roughly $150 to $225 per Medicaid transport. If there's any questions, we entertain now.
Trustee Mills?
Thank you. This would cover not just Medicaid, but also Medicare?
No, this is specifically for Medicaid.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that, because it does say Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, so I didn't know if it extended to that. Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure where the money is coming from for the reimbursement. It's from the federal government?
Correct, from CMS, the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services.
How long do they take in order to get that money back to us?
Schedules are currently not out. The municipalities that entered into it already in the fall of 2019 have started seeing reimbursements currently.
It took two years or a year to get it?
Less than.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Do we need a motion on this, then?
I would move to approve this.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. No questions. Any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Number three, request authorization to purchase 20 sets of structural firefighter clothing, 10 sets from MES Illinois's Deer Park, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $27,000, and 10 sets from Air One Equipment Incorporated, South Elgin, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $27,000, for a total request not to exceed $54,000. Chief?
Good evening. This is our annual purchase of structural firefighting gear. As we do every year, we come to you and request approval to purchase 20 sets of turnout gear for our membership. It basically is a 20% replacement per year that keeps us on a five-year cycle, so that our, as we hit each year, that 20% hits its end of life, and we keep the gear turning over so that we keep our people in up-to-date and proper protective clothing. If you remember, last year, we had started to fall behind. We had to add additional sets to it. This year, we were able to stay within our budget. We made it within almost $30 of the line item. We are seeing, because of COVID, we're seeing increase in costs in fabric, so that's why the price is up slightly this year. It's up approximately about $12 a set from last year. At this point. Any questions? I think, again, this is something we've brought to you every year, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Correct. And every five years, usually they last that long?
Yeah, so the shelf life on the product is five years, between all the washing and the wear and tear that they go through. They hit their end of the life, and we have the ability then for them to switch out into the new gear, and allows their old gear to go into a reserve status, if you will, so all onesets being washed have something to wear in that in-between. The reason for the two different manufacturers is because of more of product fit. It's virtually the exact same product. It's just, like any clothing manufacturer, one fits better than another for each member, so they have the opportunity to pick whichever set fits them the best.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Under reports for information only, one, police department monthly report. Chief, do you have anything to enlighten us with?
Nothing to add, sir.
Okay, but I would like to read a few things, that not only from residents of Hoffman Estates, but there are like 18 different letters of appreciation from about seven, eight, eight different departments that have thanked us, and thank you for sending NATHAS, and to send other officers to assist them, and especially now with the type of, let's say, what's going on as far as protests, so they all. And I'd like to read just two of these that came from residents. It says, "To the three wonderful, helpful," by the way, this is handwritten, so if I'm hesitating in writing, I'm trying to figure out when they wrote it, what they wrote. "The three wonderful, helpful, and kind policemen and woman who stopped on Route 59 because we had a blown tire. They stopped around 10:30 a.m. on Tuesday, January, June 23rd. They helped us nonstop until we could finally get a guy to help us. We were so impressed how kind they were to us, and how hard they worked, until AAA guy came to change the tire." It says, "Thank you so very much. One simple word that says so much. Sincerely, David and Margaret." David and Margaret, I'm not reading the last name.
No.
Anyways, the other one that's here, it says, "Letter of appreciation. Dear Chief Boss, writing to you today to let you know that we like, we are like many citizens, stand behind and support the Hoffman Estates Police Department and all law enforcement agencies throughout the United States. We know that your job is difficult and dangerous, especially during these trying times, but we're glad that we are here, that you're here for us. Keep up the good work. We need you now, more than ever. Sincerely yours, Barbara and Chuck." And you know what? I take the time to read these because of all the problems that everybody's trying to come up with. The police are doing their job, and thank God that they are, because they're there to protect us, and that they do, and we're very fortunate, I feel anyways, here in Hoffman Estates, that the police department that we have, and of course, it starts with the chief and disseminates down, but all the continuous training that they do, and that's for our benefit. Chief, cannot thank you enough, you and your staff.
Thank you, Trustee Gata. We appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you. So this report will be received and filed. Number two, Health and Human Services monthly report. Dr. Savidra, do you want to add anything?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. This report will be received and filed. Number three, Emergency Management Coordinator monthly report, received and filed. Fire Department monthly report. Chief, anything else to add? Okay, thank you. Report received and filed. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting. Trustee Gata?
Okay, thank you. Nothing and other, items in review, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, and good evening.
I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee this evening, July 20, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Plafis.
Present.
Vice Chairman Newell.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Thank you. We have a quorum. We're all here. Entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes from June 22, 2020?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions, comments about the minutes? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. The minutes are approved. We have three items under new business. The first is a discussion regarding an update on the financial impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the Village of Hoffman Estates. Rachel, the stage is yours.
So we wanted to start providing a monthly update to this committee now that we're several months into the pandemic. As you may recall, back in May, staff presented our projections for the financial impact of COVID on the village. We were calculating almost a $6.5 million revenue shortfall for revenues that fund operations, capital, and debt service. In May, this committee also approved a budget reduction plan of over $3.5 million of expenses to help offset that shortfall. This resulted in a $3 million balance that would have to come from general fund reserves if all of our numbers held the same. So that's where we're starting. As we watch these numbers over the coming months, we're hoping that we are positively exceeding our projections as time goes on, so that we don't have to use the $3 million fund reserves. Before we dive into the numbers, I think it's really important to note that in our original projections, we did not take into account a second wave of a statewide shutdown. We only projected the initial impact of the pandemic and how many months it might last. We do need to be mindful of that, because there is a very real possibility of a potential shutdown again, or a further rollback of the economy. So let's dive in. If you look at page one of the COVID summary, which has the table on it, you will see that although we are falling short of budget, which was expected, we are exceeding our COVID projections by over $1.2 million currently, as the numbers look right now. If the numbers continue on this trend, that is $1.2 million less that we will need out of general fund reserves, from the $3 million that we originally had predicted. So if you look at each of the detailed graphs, I just want to make sure everyone understands what we're showing. The green bar is the actual amount that we've received each month cumulative. The red line is our COVID projection, and the blue line is the original budget. So as you page through these graphs each month when we present them to you, a green bar in between the red line and the blue line is a good thing. It means we're exceeding our projections. So for example, if you look at page two, which is hotel taxes, that green bar is below the red line. It means we're falling a little short of our projections with hotel taxes. But then on page three, if you look at real estate transfer tax, not only are we exceeding the red line, we're also exceeding our budget. So that's a really good thing that's making up for some of the shortfalls that we're seeing. I'll let you, I know you've already probably looked at these numbers, and so this report is just a snapshot of the current situation, and we'll continue to provide monthly updates as time goes on. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Trustee Plafis.
Yes, sir.
When looking at those numbers, it's easy to become optimistic. I'd like to point out that it really is nice, but it's, if you look at it from a true financial standpoint, it's still bad news. We're still well below budget. It's just not as bad as we thought it would be. And we have to be mindful, as the Director of Finance said, that with the COVID numbers continuing to increase, that it's, there is a potential of another rollback. And that frankly worries us more than anything else, that if there's another rollback and the governor takes what he deems to be appropriate action, staff could be back in front of you with a different report 30 days from now, or 60 days from now.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? Trustee Stanton?
Do we have any other updated numbers on the entertainment tax? Because they kind of end in February.
So, most of the entertainment tax, in fact, all of it showing on that one for the debt service is coming from the arena, and that one had to completely shut down in February, so I don't expect to see numbers there at all until we start having events out there. There is another entertainment tax that's showing, we might start getting a little. For example, it's, this is the one where...
Main Event.
The escape room, the new escape room in the village that I know is up and running, and they are collecting entertainment tax, so we're going to see a little bit of money coming in there. But that's also Main Event, which has been shut down, but I do expect to see a little bit of money from the escape room as long as that one's open.
Is Main Event open yet or not yet?
I do not think they are. I have not seen any money coming in from Main Event.
If they are, they just opened. They just paid their license fee.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Nothing further.
Good questions. Anybody else have anything for Rachel, the team? Thanks, great job. We appreciate all the hard work giving us the spot checks. Now I get a lot of questions. All right, sorry, I was looking through the graphs. Moving back to the top here. Item number two is a request approval of a second amendment to lease to the existing communications equipment site lease agreement with Comcast of Illinois Six and Roman numerals LLC for cable TV equipment at 95 Astor Lane.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carried. Item number three is a request authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement and subrecipient agreement for coronavirus relief funds between the Village of Hoffman Estates and Cook County, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Comment is bring it on.
Yeah, right. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, the motion carries. We have three reports for information only. The first is the Finance Department monthly report. Any questions or comments? Rachel, do you have anything to add, or we're good? All righty. That'll be received and filed. The next is the Information Systems Department monthly report. Any questions, comments for Mr. Bessenhoffer? Having none, that will be received and filed. Senior Senator monthly report. Any questions, comments? Trustee Stanton?
The Hideaway Brew Garden, I've been hearing that it's been doing okay.
Yeah, the guys almost give me the weekend update. I think their, you know, gross revenues for sales are, you know, in excess of $115,000, so it's good. A lot of people want to be out and be a part of, you know, what's happening a little bit outdoors in a safe manner. I don't know if that's exact. Mark, do you want to weigh in, or?
I don't know if that's exact either. I just wanted to add on though.
Mark. I need you on the mic.
Haven't done this in a while.
Out of practice, right?
Come back to it.
I just wanted to add that the gross revenues isn't all profit, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
But they are covering costs and generating a modest profit. More importantly, they are covering Levy's salaries, so we're able to keep them busy, keep them on the staff, and paid for without dipping into the other revenues. So that's the other positive of the Brew Garden. And again, like Trustee Plafis said, they are attracting a fair number of people, and people seem to be happy to be there, so it's providing a nice diversion in these times.
Has the movie, drive-in movie part taken off? Is that paying for itself?
You know, I forgot to ask, I talked to him today for quite a while, and I forgot to ask him about that. I do know that they must be reasonably successful, because they want to continue into August and possibly even into September.
Oh, good.
So they can't be doing too bad.
Whatever works.
If you haven't seen how big the screen is, it's worth the drive. That was one thing I didn't get on the video that I sent you all yesterday. I should have panned over. It's like boxcars high.
Yeah.
And you know, kind of on the tail of what Mark shared, Yusuf, you know, explained that once we break the $100,000 threshold, like Mark said, that's where profit starts to enter. So it's a good thing, you know, after this weekend or the weekend before, somewhere in there, you know, we're above that line now, so that's where they really wanted to be. Of course, the more the better. Anything else you want to update? I mean, Ben's not here to give his monthly report. Michael, you want to take a shot at being Ben? No? Okay. Not many people can jump in those shoes. All right, without any other questions, that report will be received and filed. President's report, Mayor? I'll wait for the board meeting. Is there anything and other from the group out here? Nope. No items in review, and we'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to call the Public Works and Utility Committee to order on this July 20, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Newell.
Present.
Vice Chairman Gata.
Present.
Trustee Plafis.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. We have three sets of minutes to approve today, the first one being for the June 15, 2020 special meeting for the Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections, notice, deletions, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Non-nay's motion passed. The minutes for the June 22, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or deletions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nay's motion passed. And then the last set of minutes would be for the July 6, 2020 special meeting. We have a motion and a second, seeing no deletions or corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed. Okay, under new business, we have three items. The first item is request authorization to award contract for 2020 concrete maintenance restoration program to AC Concrete Construction, which is out of Carpenter'sville, Illinois, which is the low bid, at a unit price of $8.80 per square foot for sidewalk, $29 per lineal foot for curb replacements, and $72 per square yard for driveway apron replacements in an amount not to exceed $95,000.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, anything that we need to add? Trustee Palofas.
I just had one question, it's related but not directly. I was told we don't do the grinding of the sidewalks anymore. Is that because of a budgetary or equipment, or is that even true? Could somebody clarify?
That, it is true. We do not use the grinder anymore unless it's an extreme situation due to the dust that's created.
Okay.
Creates, that's, we quit doing that about eight years ago because of that reason.
Really, that long? Okay.
Yes.
I didn't know it was that long, because there's some that still look pretty fresh, so I was just curious. So then, if there's a big buckling that we report, it'll be determined then based on, versus a replacement?
Yeah, yes, we also do mudjacking still, which on smaller deflections, we can raise up, usually within a couple of inches. The replacement is usually for larger areas or larger discrepancies.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed. Item number two, request authorization to award contract for 2020 to 2021 janitorial maintenance services for Village Hall, Police Department, Susan Kenley Rupnow Public Works Center, and Fleet Services Facility to Echo Clean Maintenance Incorporated, which is out of Elmhurst, Illinois, for a total contract monthly fee of $5,730, total annual contract amount not to exceed $78,000.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Anybody need to add anything? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed. Item number three, request authorization to waive bidding and purchase one 2020 Bobcat E35 compact track excavator utilizing Sourcewell Co-op, formerly NJPA from Atlas Bobcat, which is out of Elk Grove Village, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $45,505.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, anything to add, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This motion passed. Okay, under reports, we have two for information only. The first is the Department of Public Works Monthly Report. Do we have anything additional?
Trustee?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just a question, I see we were going to start the water main replacement. Has that started, and how's it going?
We are waiting for permits to come back for signature, or signed permits, and then we should be good to go.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Trustee Mills, I can't see back there.
Need mirrors.
I do, I need something back here. Okay, so then that report will be received and filed for Public Works. The second report is Department of Development Services Monthly Engineering Report of the Transportation and Engineering Division. Do we have anything to add to that one at all whatsoever? Okay, seeing nothing, we will receive and file that. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting, Chairperson, no.
Thank you. Nothing under other or items in review. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
We're not done yet. We have a special planning, building, and zoning committee you have to sit through. And that's now, July 20th, 2020. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Stanton.
President.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palofas.
President.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. New business is request approval of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Consolidated Plan 2020 to 2024, and the Annual Action Plan of 2020.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ryan, you want to explain?
Yes. This item is the five-year consolidated plan for the CDBG program, which is a grant from HUD, and it's also the annual plan for 2020. The 2020 program year runs from October 1st of this year to September 30th of next year. The consolidated plan runs from October 1st of this year until September 30th of 2025. For program year 2020, this upcoming one, the village expects to receive an allocation from HUD of approximately $246,577, a slight increase over the current program year. With the current consolidated plan, the village's objectives remain the same. Objective one is to provide improvements to public infrastructure and facilities in order to sustain a suitable living environment. Objective two is to provide access to affordable housing services and programs. From those two objectives that are in the consolidated plan, we then have four goals. First is neighborhood infrastructure projects. Second is public facility improvements. Third is housing rehabilitation. And fourth is planning and administration. But infrastructure projects for this coming annual plan would be budgeted at $183,595, and that'd be for a public street or possibly a parking lot improvement in an eligible neighborhood. Public facility improvements would be the same as in previous years, which is facility improvements at the Children's Advocacy Center, the CAC, which is a facility village-owned, and also contribution to the Regional Journeys project. The third is housing rehabilitation program for $65,000. That's the village's single-family rehabilitation program. It's a zero-interest grant, and...
Fourth is program.
...administration for $49,000, and that's to cover administrative costs. It's difficult to forecast the entirety of the five-year plan's budget. Each year HUD comes up with a formula to create their budget or the funding that we'll receive, but in round terms for this five-year plan, it includes $600,000 for public infrastructure improvements such as the streets, $87,595 for public facility improvements, and $400,000 for the single-family rehabilitation program. I'm unable to answer any questions.
Trustee Palofas.
Thanks, Ryan. Do we actually spend out the budget every year that we're given, or is there ever, if not, do we roll it, or is it use it or lose it?
It is where we can roll it over, and typically we spend, I'd say, three-quarters of the funding each year. And if we ever have an allocation of over 150% of the current allocation, so maybe $350,000, and that continues to grow larger, then HUD can penalize the village or any municipality by taking away money in future years. But we haven't had that issue.
Is the biggest challenge in spending it out just the paperwork side, the administrative part of, you know, moving all the paperwork?
That can definitely be a challenge with the streets, and also just not knowing the market sometimes when it fluctuates. So with a single-family rehabilitation program, we've had more people selling their homes, so we might be getting some program income from that, and so less people seem to be applying for it. Well, also, this year with the pandemic has been a little bit unusual, less people applying.
All right, thank you. That's all for me.
Yes, Trustee Mills.
Yeah, we probably should make sure we're publicizing about the rehabilitation program, especially this time right now with people unemployed and possibly needing to do work on their homes. It's a good time to make sure they're aware of the program that we have, because that's a good aspect of this, and it has helped a lot of people in the past. On the public facility improvements, how much of that would be going to Children's Advocacy this year, do we know?
It's not precisely split right now, but it would be probably $5,000 as we had for this same year, so the smaller piece of it. The Journeys project did not go forward this year. It hasn't moved forward again with the pandemic, everything was slowed down, so the majority of the funds would go to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Norris.
I was in receipt of an email from Mr. Frick from Clearbrook that I did forward to the board this evening, indicating that he wanted the board to be aware that they did submit a request. Mr. Johnson, how many total requests or approximate requests did we receive from other agencies?
Um, I'm sure at least...
A large number.
At least, at least 10, at least.
So, and he, I wanted to, since he did email me and I did forward it to the board, I wanted to highlight for the record that he did submit it. This is one of those ones that's not COVID-related, because the board did fund three COVID-related requests, but I wanted to highlight that he did send an email today to the board, and your past policy has been not to, since the village is still utilizing the funds for village purposes and for both the Journeys and the CAC, but I didn't want to, I wanted just for the record to make sure that it was announced.
We have a motion and a second. Any other people want to speak on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Take a short five-minute break. To call the meeting of July 20th, 2020 to order, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Oh, present.
Trustee Palofas.
President.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present. Anybody please rise? Trustee Gata, you want to lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) to America, and to the Republic of Republicans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Gata. We'll move on to recognition of the audience. This is a time if someone has a question or concern they want to bring before the board or the village staff, now's the time to come forward. Seeing nothing, we'll move on to, for the approval of the minutes of the July 6th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Move on to item five, consent agenda. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. A, approval of the agenda. B, approval of the schedule of bills for July 20th, 2020 in the amount of $4,712,119.47. C, request board approval of an ordinance granting a variation to premises at 2,000 Center Drive Bell Works. And D, request board approval to cancel village events for the remainder of 2020. Anybody want any of these items pulled? If not, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palofas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to six, President's report. Mr. Norris, do you want to stand up, sir? Village of Hoffman Estates, Office of the Mayor. Whereas after 22 and a half years of distinguished service to the Village of Hoffman Estates, James H. Jim Norris is retiring August 14th, 2020. He's appointed as village manager in March 1998. Whereas Jim has held several esteemed municipal positions over the years, including Gladstone, Missouri City Manager, October of 1988 to February of 1998; Schaumburg, Illinois Assistant Village Manager, January 1987 to October 1988; Pelotine, Illinois Assistant Village Manager, July 1983 to January 1987; and Western Springs, Illinois Management Internist, September 1981 to July 1983. Whereas Jim received his Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Missouri-St. Louis, majoring in history and political science. Jim went on to receive his Master's in public administration specializing in urban management from Northern Illinois University, graduating in 1983 with a 4.0 GPS. Whereas Jim is a valued professor, having taught courses in public affairs, public policy, and public administration at Park Hill College, Kansas City, Missouri, Northwestern University, Chicago, Illinois, and Northern Illinois University DeKalb, Illinois. Whereas Jim has held numerous professional and association positions, and is held in high regard by all of his peers. He has provided his time and talent to Northwest Central Dispatch Board of Directors from 1998 to present, acting as Vice Chair, May 1999 through 2001, and Chair, May 2001 through April 2003. The Joint National Water Agency, JWA, Executive Committee from March 1998 to present, participating on the Engineering Subcommittee, March 1998 through April 2000. Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, May 27th through May 2015, and Chair of the Executive Committee, 2015 through 2020. Solid Waste Agency of Northern Creek County, SWANC, serving the Board of Directors, March 1998 to present, Executive Committee, April 2002 to present, serving as Chair of the Executive Committee, May 2010 through May 2015, as Vice Chair, May 2015 through April 2020. Joint Emergency Management Agency, GMA, as a chairperson, February 2019 through December 2019, and Vice Chair, February 2016 through January 2019. Whereas Jim has been actively involved in Illinois Municipal League Managers Committee, IML, as a committee member, October 2010 through June 2020, and is Chair of the Committee, January 2015 through December 2015. And, it's two placards, Jim.
Two?
Two.
Front and back.
Whereas Jim has held several key positions with Illinois City County Management Association, ICMA, including Board of Directors, Secretary, Treasurer, 2003 through 2006, Vice President, 2006, 2007, President-elect, 2007, 2008, President, 2008, 2009, and Past President, 2009 through 2010, and Chair of the Ethics Committee, 2010 through 2011. Be it therefore resolved that I, William D. McCleod, acting under my virtue of the authority vested me by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates hereby proclaim, Friday, August 14th, 2020, as James H. Norris Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and we urge everyone to join this observance. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion and a second. We all appreciate the great job you've done for us and for our citizens, Jim, most importantly, and wish you good luck in whatever you decide to do in the future.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. A little bump action, yeah. Got to say a few words, Jim.
I can almost, I can almost, Trustee, can you move over just a little bit? Can almost get everybody in.
Why are you going?
Oh, you want everybody in?
Yeah.
Yeah, best we can.
Don't move closer. Six feet away. All right, hit the ground. Three, one, two, three. One more, please. Jim, please help one more, please.
Hold on, sir.
Got to re-grip. Re-grip, re-grip. All right, here we go. One, two, three, four. All right. Is everyone smiling underneath their mask? I'm making amends.
Should have heard it. First of all, Mayor, if I could, say a couple things?
Sure.
I want to thank everybody in the room, all of our residents, all of our wonderful staff, the staff especially, and I'm not talking about the department heads yet, I'll get to them, have made it a pleasure to work here because they truly believe in what they do in delivering first-class services. They've made it easier to be in the leadership position because you knew if you went to them with an issue that they'd take care of it, and they take care of it expeditiously. I've always felt blessed to have a wonderful management team like I do. There's been some faces that have changed over the years, but there are some who've been here the entire time. I'm going to start with Debbie Shoup, who might maybe not be considered a member of the management team, but from day one, she had been Peter Burchard's executive assistant from day one. She kind of took me under her protective wing, taught me the ways of Hoffman Estates in terms of processes, and has just been outstanding to work with the entire time. I'm not going to take the time to go through everyone and talk that long about them, but Rachel, Dan, Mark Copeland, and I don't want to risk missing somebody, have all been here from the very beginning with me. And the entire management team, my heart goes, my heart goes out to them in terms of thanks for their support, and that includes Pat and Ted, who, while they weren't in their positions, they were definitely here at the village. Retrospectively, looking, thinking back to January, February of 98, man, it feels like forever ago now, I need to thank the mayor and who was Trustee McLeod at the time, and Trustee Mills, because they were part of the group that decided to hire me. And they're the only two that are left still on, on the board, and I've definitely appreciated their support the entire time. I feel fortunate to have worked with so many dedicated people, elected officials. You give your talent and your heart, and bluntly, of all the villages I've worked for, I've never had elected officials that were engaged in the community as much and attended as many community events as this group attends. And that's why you do know what the community feels, and you do provide that guidance to staff on a regular basis and help us be more effective. Lastly, I have to thank my family. This part's going to get a little difficult. I was asked about two weeks ago by a peer, of your 40-year career, Jim, what are you most proud of? It didn't take me hardly any time at all to say, I have a lot of things I'm proud of working at the village, but I'm most proud of is my family. When I moved here, my son was going into second grade. Shannon, my middle child, was in preschool, hadn't even turned five yet, and Jennifer might have been thought of, but wasn't born. Jimmy turns 30 this year, Shannon's 26, Jenny's going away to college in a couple weeks, and Hoffman Estates has been home. And their successes and the type of people they've turned out to be is due largely to my wife. When you have the type of job and vocation and avocation of being involved in local government, which includes the weeks, the time we put in during the day, and then the night meetings and other things, you're fortunate if you're supported by a spouse as well as I've been. So my thanks to my wife especially. So with that, thank you all very much. I'm going to miss the people the most. I intend to continue to live in the village for the foreseeable future, and if you ever need assistance or have a question about something I may have scribbled on a piece of paper and you can't read it, I'm not as bad as Mark. Reach out, I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another proclamation, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do, and I'm lucky to have it. Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H. W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. This legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life. However, full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. And whereas, on the anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, the Village of Hoffman Estates celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of quality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim, Sunday, July 26, 2020, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day, in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estates citizens, government agencies, business leaders, and public and private institutions in the village to celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Civil Rights Law and many contributions of individuals with disabilities.
Chair would accept a motion. So moved. I'll second. Motion to second, this is probably the signature achievement of the George H. W. Bush administration, was considered very controversial at the time, was improved the lives of millions of people and given people opportunity to go places and do things that they previously denied. So I want to thank him and Congress and everybody who got this message done against pretty stiff odds, but they got it done. That's a wonderful thing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carried. I do have one resignation this evening, Mike Cooper from the Youth Commission. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved with regrets.
We have a motion to second, and Mike did a great job of chairing the Youth Commission and serving on it prior to that, and he's got other commitments that allow him to continue, but hopefully we'll get him back at some point, I would hope. All of us here are mourn the passing of Tricia O'Brien's mother. Tricia's the president of the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce, and our prayers and thoughts go with her and her family. Also, it's not too late to still go online and complete the census. This is critically important to the Village of Hoffman Estates, the state of Illinois, to ensure funding and representation, so it's not too late. So if you haven't done it, please do it. Haven't met in a couple of weeks, we do have some things that have taken place. We had a White House briefing on the 7th about safely opening the schools, which is a very timely issue, and it seems to be a great debate whether that can be done or not. And Wednesday, we had another weekly call with the, with the White House on COVID. And on the 9th, we had a virtual town hall meeting with quite a few speakers, and we had a, a good crowd that called, that participated through Zoom. We had a lot of questions, and it was a very interesting and, very interesting event, and we'll be doing more of those in the future. On Monday, the 13th, we had our Northwest Suburban, Southern, South Suburban Mayor's Conference Call with President, President Preckwinkle of Cook County. We had our Wings Advisory, Leadership Advisory Board meeting via, via go-to meeting, and then I participated in a webinar on mental health wellness during a public pandemic. On Tuesday, the 14th, we had another webinar on state and local officials, resurgence of COVID-19. And Wednesday is a very interesting discussion also, is that Holding Data Hostage or Digital Roundtable Discussion. I certainly know more about the digital world than I did years ago. No question about it. Fortunately, I have an expert living at home, so she can help me along the way. And Friday, the 17th, we had our National Legal Cities Transportation Committee meeting. On the 18th, we had our Coffee with the Board, the first one we've had in a while, in the Hennessy Room, and we had pretty good attendance, I thought. I didn't know whether anybody would show up. Then later, I went to the Children's Health Center where the Census Committee had a drive-by and they gave out goodie bags, again urging people to please, please, please fill out their census forms. And I think that's all I have for now, so we can move on to trustee comments. We'll start with Trustee Arnett.
Thank you. I also attended the Coffee with the Board this past Saturday, and I agree, it was a very good turnout for our, our first one back in Village Hall. And just congratulations to Mr. Norris. Job well done, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Hey, Trustee Stanton.
Thank you. On the 9th, I was able to attend the virtual town hall meeting, which is called Forward Together. And then on the 18th, I attended our Coffee with the Board, and congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
I'm sure we're going to get golfing together for a while.
Join the retired links with you, yeah.
It's not bad, not bad. Trustee Mills.
Thank you. On the 8th, I celebrated a birthday with my husband, and even though we were on a mini-vacation, I did sit in and listen in at the virtual town hall meeting on the 9th, which was very interesting. 14th, we celebrated our 47th wedding anniversary on the 18th Coffee with the Board, and I can't say enough to Mr. Norris, you are leaving some very big shoes to fill around here, and we thank you and commend you for a great season here with all of us. When you were talking about your family and thanking them, it brought back one memory from your interview back way back when, and you had some very enlightening and, and very good information that you provided to the board at that time, but the one thing you mentioned that I'll never forget is your family would always come first, and I think you've managed to do that over the years, and I applaud you for that. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Trustee Gata.
There we go. The, on the 8th, which was Wednesday, listening to the National COVID Conference Call on COVID-19, and then on July 15th, I had a very interesting phone interview from a Boy Scout, Sean, from the Troop 399, and his interview was on e-cigarettes, and this was for part of his Eagle Scout, and having to talk to a government official and so forth. And just listening to the type of questions that this young man was asking and so forth, I was very impressed. It was very interesting, and it was like almost a half hour long. And then on Saturday, Coffee with the Board, as everybody has mentioned on that, and the turnout was, was greater than what we really thought. We thought we'd be the only ones in there, right? And congratulations to Jim Norris on that, right? Enjoyed meeting you, working with you in the short time that I've been over here, and good luck to whatever you're going to go into. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Palafas.
Yes, sir. I also attended Coffee with the Board, which didn't have any coffee, but it had a lot of great people, some of which it, it took him to talk for me to notice them, like Joel sitting in the back, like who is that guy? It sounds like Joel. But it was fun, all the input they gave, and, and even despite modern times, that they'll still show up and, and be a part of what's going on here, and, and asking questions and, you know, talking about all of my favorite food places, what building's going to be what and whatnot. Today, I led the HEC meeting, which is great. Trustee Newell actually joined on behalf of the township, so it was, you know, it was a VIP type of experience, and, you know, all of the 15 different agencies lean in and talk about, you know, what they're doing, and we normally don't meet over the summer, but we decided to because, you know, given modern times, everybody is supporting somebody through this, and it's just good to hear the encouragement and, and, you know, how everybody is uplifted throughout these times, really by each other. Also, I've had some fun interactions with, with State Representative Musman. We had some, some meetings with the Chiefs and whatnot about, you know, some of the things that you're, you're seeing that are out in, in the modern times of what we're going through today with, you know, law enforcement and different types of gatherings, and that was fun. You know, I, I don't know if she's ever had a chance to be with our Chiefs before, but had that chance, and it was, it was fun to be a part of that. Last and very least, I need like a mirror so I can see Jim, so I'm talking, I'm talking to him behind me. I know, I know, it's great.
Comfortable having me behind your back?
Never, never. I know you've always had my back, so that, that wasn't what I was planning to say, but thanks for the lead-in. It's been a pleasure getting to know you, you know, and I appreciate your years of dedication to our community. I got to meet Jim on the shores of South Ridge Park during one of our fishing derbies. Now, I don't know how, like, you know, I was just Michelle's husband at the time, and she always talked about all these village people and what she was doing, and I'd sneak over here and eat pizza during your budget meetings, you know, that took like four or five days, I don't know how you did that, by the way, but, you know, it was fun, and getting to know Jim on those shores, and, and I know Caleb and Jenny were very new in our lives at the time, and, you know, just talking as dads and getting to know each other, and then here I am, I got to show up and, you know, spend the last 13 years of his career, you know, at, at the, at the edge of his existence, having tons of fun, asking, you know, thousands of questions, and I appreciate your answer to all of them. No matter where I was in the world, you were always there to, to grab the phone. And as Trustee Stanton mentioned, I think we'll definitely be doing some golfing, you know, and, and hopefully some other activities as well along the way. It's been my pleasure, you know, watching your family grow up, attending their football or soccer games and, and whatnot. My boys are very, very big fans of the Norris girls and, and whatnot. Jimmy was too old for them to really get to know, but it, it's been fun having the interaction and all of your support, so good luck to you, whatever you go and do, I know you'll be awesome at it, and, you know, we always joke whenever new people join our committees and our commissions, and we, we get to talking to them, they're like, oh, I just retired. You know, those are the people that go out and they, they sign up for three times the amount that their schedule has available, so, so don't do that, you know, relax and chill. Go to Starbucks a lot, but have fun, and thanks for all of your years and just the relationships you built here.
Thanks, Trustee Palafas. Trustee Newell.
Okay, just a couple of things. On the 7th, did the sustainability meeting, on the 9th, the virtual town hall meeting. On the 18th, of course, Coffee with the Board, and we did have a good crowd. On the 20th, which was today, of course, the HEC meeting, which was really a, a good meeting, there was a lot of people that were involved in it and to hear everything that they are involved in. And last but not least is just to say, thanks a lot, Mr. Norris. Appreciate it. You were always there when I had questions, and just wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Newell. Speaking of Manager Norris, 7th, the 6th seat, the Village Managers' Report.
No report tonight, sir.
How about the Village Clerk's Report?
No report.
And the Treasurer's Report?
Village Treasurer has presented his report for May, and it's ready for your review.
Anybody have any questions or anything on the report? Night will be received and filed, thank you very much. Move on to 7th, Planning and Zoning Commission Reports, Chairperson Combs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are going to miss you greatly. Planning and Zoning Commission approved a request by the Village of Hoffman Estates owner and applicant for a master sign plan in accordance with Section 9-3-8-M-13 of the zoning code for the property located at 5333 Prairie Stone Parkway Arena property. Vote was 11 As, no NAs. There were two commissioners that had dissenting opinions about some of the signage that was proposed. I think it's all laid out, and you're finding a fact.
Hey, Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion to second. Any questions on this? Trustee Stanton.
I do agree with Chairperson Combs on her dissent regarding some of these signs that are not needed. The only one that I may not agree with was the, the one in the front window, and I would say that could be used occasionally, but I wouldn't say it needed to be done on a regular basis. If we approve this tonight, is that approving all of these signs, or is this going to come in front of us on a piecemeal basis as to which signs we approve eventually?
It's a master sign plan, so they're allowed to have whatever signage you have approved.
At any time they want.
It doesn't mean that they have to have the same dimensions on it, but they can go up to those dimensions.
I think the board would like to see whatever their final plan is.
I agree, but...
Mayor? Yes, Trustee Mills.
Did, when you made your suggestion, Chairman, did they agree to any of those changes or not? Or did they respond at all?
I didn't get support from any of the other commissioners outside of the Vice Chair, so it wasn't...
Could I suggest, because for the master sign plans for everyone, anybody else that we've done them for, commercial properties, that if they do apply for something and it's within the limits of the master sign plan, its administrative lead staff approve the permits issued. If there are certain signs that are most concerning, I would ask that through motion, you hold those on the side, and that those come back to you. But there's some of the signs, because of the lead time, like the facade signs, they take eight to 10 weeks to get, and the goal was to get them available to be put up as close to that September 1st date as possible. I'm sure Mark or Mike can talk more about it, but if there are specific signs that the board is concerned about, please, that would, that would work better from a purchasing standpoint.
But I would think that not only from an individual sign perspective, but also to keep in mind what other signage is going to be on the property at the same time. keep in mind what other signage is going to be on the property at the same time. Too busy or distracting.
Mr. Kaplan, do you have something you want to?
To echo Mr. Norris's comments, the signs that are in question are the signs that are there for the future to allow Mike Jopek and Spectre Partnerships to sell sponsorships and generate revenue. So the signs, I believe, I wasn't at the meeting, I was out of town, the signs that are related to the new naming rights sponsor now, I believe there were no issues with. So we can proceed with those contracts. One other note is that in some of those areas, we blocked out a much larger area than typically or probably would ever use just to allow, or whatever configuration of sponsor Mike is able to sell. So instead of just blocking out something like this, we might need something like, you know, more of a square, or it might be over here on the building versus over there on the building. So that's where we provided some latitude, but we certainly understand, you know, the concerns about maximizing those signs on all of those places, that would be a bit much. We agree with that.
Mike, did you want to?
I'll say, when it comes to a lot of the signage in these pieces, is our goal is not to turn the building into more or less a NASCAR vehicle. We want to do this with the right taste to make this building a premium-looking building. Some of these signs, to the Plan Zoning Commission's point, yes, if we took up every square inch of this space, it would be a piece that it might look busy in certain areas. However, that's not the goal of what we will do with the signage, and that signage does come down to the village's ultimate approval on the content that is in those signs as well. The zoning and the planning zoning was, from my understanding, the square footage of those areas, so the content would still be coming to be approved.
Thank you. Trustee Palafas.
Just to represent the financial side, you know, I was somewhat impressed with the fact that you found places to put signs that I never would have thought of, to the point where I started to ask myself, do we have enough power for all these signs? I mean, we're going to have to run a whole nother service out there. Even the roof, I was like, wow, there you go. And we're on one of the, we're on one of the flight paths for O'Hara. I used to fly over and be like, hey, I spent a lot of time in that place. You know, so I think, albeit, you know, we don't want it to look busy and ugly, we do want to optimize the amount of revenue we can capture, all of it. You know, so from that perspective, you know, I'm kind of on the other side, you know, screaming to light it up, right? Same thing with the Brew Garden or anything else that we can use as, you know, a revenue source in modern times, you know, as we're kind of going through all this. I guess what I would ask for you, Michael specifically, and I know Ben buffers a lot because he's kind of the face of the arena, but don't ever, you know, hesitate to come here and say, hey, you know, I have some of these things that are coming through as a courtesy, or just, you know, I know there was some concern about certain areas on the building, and just do checkpoints with us, you know what I mean? We're on your side in terms of your success. So that's really my comments, but, you know, I agree, I agree with Eva and the vice chair that, you know, it's a healthy balance, and I know you guys have always done things in good taste. We've never looked at anything respectively and said, oh, man, that was ugly, who approved that? We can drive around town and do that, though. There are some things, but not the arena yet. So anyway, you know, thanks for all of your work, Mark, and the team for bringing that forward and the creativity behind it. I hope, you know, we do get a lot of, you know, signage and vendors and people that are interested, you know, once we're able to open that building again.
Okay, any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. If there's nothing else, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
As is nay.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Combs. Move on to A, additional business. We have quite a number of items on additional business.
I will propose an omnibus vote on additional business items A through K.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion of second for an omnibus vote on A through K. Any discussion? See no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried.
I'll make the actual motion now to approve the omnibus.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion of second. The items under additional business include the following. Request board approval of an ordinance amending Session 8-3-22. Number of licenses of Article III alcoholic liquors of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code. Decrease the number of Class A, Class D, and Class Double D licenses for Y Chicago Northwest Management LLC doing business as Chicago Marriott Northwest 4800 Hoffman Boulevard. Increase in number of Class A, Class D, and Class Double D licenses for Hoffman Estates Hotel Group doing business as Chicago Marriott Northwest 4800 Hoffman Boulevard. Increase in Class A license for Popular 2706 CC doing business as Honeyberry Cafe 2708 North Sutton Road B. Request board approval of an ordinance granting a master sign plan under Section 9-3-8-M-13 of the zoning code for the property located at 533 Prairie Stone Parkway Arena property. C, request board authorization to award contract for 2020 concrete maintenance restoration program to AC Concrete Constructions Carpenter, Illinois, low bid, at a unit price of $8.08 per square foot for sidewalk, $29 per lineal feet for curb replacements, and $72 per square yard for driveway apron replacements, an amount not to exceed $95,000. Request board authorization to award contract for 2020 through 2023 to janitorial maintenance services for Village Hall, Police Building, Susan Kenley Repinow Public Works Center, and Fleet Services Facility to Echo Clean Maintenance, Inc., Elmer's, Illinois, for a total contract monthly fee of $5,000. $730 total amount contract not to exceed $78,000. E, request board authorization to one, way formal bidding, and two, purchase one, 2020 Bobcat E35 compact track excavator utilizing Sourcewell Co-op formerly NJPA from Atlas Bobcat Elk Grove Village, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $45,505. F, request board authorization to extend the existing contract for the provision of village nuisance wildlife control to Animal Trackers Wildlife Company Hoffman Estates, Illinois, for a period of one year. G, request board approval to enter into the Illinois Ground Emergency Medical Transportation , GEMT Medicaid reimbursement program through an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services, HFS. H, request board authorization to purchase 20 sets of structural firefighting clothing, 10 sets from MES, Illinois, Deer Creek, Illinois, sole-source vendor in an amount not to exceed $27,000, and 10 sets from Air One Equipment, Inc., South Asian, Illinois, sole-source vendor in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for a total request not to exceed $54,000. I, request board approval of the community development block grant request, CDBG Consolidated Plan 2020 through 2024, and Annual Action Plan 2020. J, request board authorization to enter into an intergovernmental and subrecipient agreement for coronavirus relief funds between the Village of Hoffman Estates and Cook County, Illinois. K, request board approval of the Second Amendment to lease to the existing communications equipment, site lease agreement with Comcast of Illinois, VILLC for cable TV equipment at 95 Astor Lane. Anybody want anything polled?
I would request B be polled.
B?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the master sign plan, okay.
Yes.
That was my motion then, to vote on that to be out of the omnibus.
Same here as my second. Okay, so we're voting on A, and then C through K.
Right.
Any other questions on anything? If not, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Go back to B, request board approval of an ordinance granting a master sign plan under Section 9-3-8-M-13 of the zoning code for the property located at 5333 Prairie Stone Parkway Arena property. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any discussion? See no discussion. Can you poll the Board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Nay.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Okay, Chair would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion?
Second.
See no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried. We are adjourned. Woohoo.